Good evening, welcome to the February 27th Board of Selectmen's meeting. This meeting is being recorded for cablecast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. Alrighty, so, we are going to go a little bit out of order on the agenda, because we have Senator Brady here to talk about the Silver Lake land sale and the legislation for that, and we have FinCom in here, and anybody else that has some questions? So, Senator?
Maybe we should just introduce ourselves.
Okay, we can do that. My name's Colin Thompson, I'm the Chair of the Board of Selectmen.
John Trainor, Selectmen.
Dale Plo, Town Coordinator.
Great.
Finance Committee?
Lisa Hart, Finance Committee.
Susan Ossoff, Finance Committee.
Marilyn Brown, Finance Committee.
Thank you. I'm Mike Brady, State Senator from the Second from the Bristol District. This is my Legislative Chief of Staff, Alvi Dural-Amon, my Lieutenant Adana.
Senator, if you don't mind, there is actually a microphone on this podium over here, and that would probably help the cameras.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, I thank you for inviting me here to speak this evening. Would you like me to proceed?
Yes, please, thank you.
And I apologize for having a hoarse voice with the weather going back and forth, even though we did enjoy a little warm spell. I get allergies every change of the season, so my voice is a little hoarse. This all started on my end. I got a correspondence on two emails, one from the town of Plimpton and one from the town of Halifax, via a home row petition that was filed in regards to selling land from the Silver Lake Regional School District to the town of Kingston to propose having a police station built next door to the Silver Lake Regional School. So I looked into it, and I talked to my legal counsel, because I was asked to file an amendment to that home row petition that was filed. And I also spoke to the representative who represents the area, because protocol, we always work with the local representatives on any home row petitions, and 99% of the time, we support the home row petitions of the representatives from the district. So I also spoke to the Senator who represents Kingston as well to talk about the issue, and looked into filing the legislation. So when my conversations talking with different entities, the amendment could have been filed, and what happened was, they said that if this amendment was filed, it was going to kill the whole deal, and the police station would never be able to be built on the land. Now, separate of that, they also, whether the amendment was not filed and it went through on the vote of the school committee, the town of Kingston still has to vote whether they want to sell the land, as a town of Kingston, to have the police station built on this property. But, as my research, going through all the research, I did understand that there was a vote of the school committee district from Silver Lake Region. And I did some history studies on past votes of school committees, not just from this area, but also from western part of the state and everywhere else in the Commonwealth. Whenever there's been a vote of selling land, and a vote has been taken by a regional school district, they have to abide by the regional school district's wishes and votes. They're the elected body to do so. So I looked into the amendment, and I was talking back and forth with Representative Carter and Senator Vinny DiMascio on our legal department, and I checked with outside private attorneys as well. They kept getting back to me, they said, "Well, if this amendment had been filed, it'll kill the whole deal, the police station would never be built." I got correspondence from a Chief of Police from Hanson, who also asked me not to file this amendment. I was back and forth with some other residents from the district. So if I filed the amendment, there was also discussion that a further amendment could have been filed to supersede my amendment and kill that amendment. So generally, working together with a fellow elected officials, talked with Representative Carter and Representative Senator Vinny DiMascio, we worked out an amendment that would be amenable to all the elected officials at the state level. And that's the amendment that I filed that would allow the residents to speak, because it was the amendment itself, and I'll get back to that, was asked to allow the town of Halifax or the town of Plimpton to vote on the issue. And as I mentioned, in the past history, this has never been done, they've always taken the vote of the elected school committee vote in the past. So, talking with all the other elected officials, we came up with a medical amendment that was agreed upon by all parties to allow the residents of each town and the elected officials to go to the Kingston meeting where they're going to have a town vote and be able to voice their opinion on the matter. But not to take a separate vote, because that was not going to be agreed upon with the other state elected officials in the district. So that's what I did, I filed an amendment to allow any residents or elected officials to go speak at this hearing that they're going to have in Kingston. I did find out that they did have one meeting, that I don't know if anybody from this town was notified of it, or the town of Halifax, as I heard some of the elected officials were not, or residents were not voting, and I was not aware of that until after the fact. So what I did moving forward, so this doesn't happen again, is I filed a new piece of legislation, and unfortunately, it was too late for this thing, because when I first got wind of this, this was in September, and everything was coming down towards the end of the year. So I filed new legislation this upcoming year, that if this issue ever comes up again, that there has to be a vote by the town elected officials in the towns, as well as the school committee, whenever they're selling land. And this has never happened in the past, always they've taken the vote of the elected board of the school committee, and I never want to take the power away from the school committee. I was an elected school committee member back in 96 in the city of Brockton, and that's what they're elected to do. And I've talked to some of the school committee members as well, that were, they weren't even happy that this was even being discussed, because they said, "We're the elected board, we should have the power, you're taking our power away from us, to take a vote away from us." But, moving forward, to have more discussion on this, I filed a piece of legislation for the upcoming year to look into opening up, if ever there's a piece of land being sold from a regional school district, that the towns elected officials, as well as the towns, because in town means you have a whole town that has a quorum to vote, that they will be able to vote on future situations like this.
Doesn't help us now.
I know that.
Alright, so, I have to say that I'm probably a little disappointed that two out of the three towns involved in the school district asked you to do something, and basically you chose not to. So it's a little disappointing, I understand your reasoning, but... And the school cannot purchase land without the town meeting vote, so it just seems a little harsh, let's just put it that way, that they can just sell it.
I understand your feelings. Other than one letter I received from the town of Plimpton, and we discussed some things in one person in Halifax, I didn't get any other correspondence from anybody in the towns to ask me to amend this.
You didn't get a letter from Halifax?
I did get a letter from Halifax and a letter from Plimpton, but just two people, that was it. And I talked to a Selectman in Halifax on the issue, but I had an open meeting here during the course of this time, in the fall, I had open hours, meeting hours which you do in every part of my district, unfortunately, and I advertised, unfortunately, I had probably one person come in to see me, no issue was ever brought to my attention regarding this. And I did the same in Halifax, and that was at the Council on Aging, and more people at that, of course, were concerned about, because they need a new Council on Aging facility, which we filed some money in the budget to do that. Our governor unfortunately cut the budget. But, no one else had even ever brought this to my attention. But, in the past, and unfortunately, in the past, I had the legal department look into this and everything else, they've never taken away the vote of a legal elected school committee on issues like this.
Alright, Susan?
I just, I posed this question to Representative Carter, who's what you just said. My question was, in those other precedents, how many times was it a regional school district selling land to a town that's a member of the district that has 50% of the votes on the committee? And I don't know the answer to that, but that's a concern.
Sure. I don't know the numbers of the percentage, but the towns were out in the western part of the state that did have the regional school districts that followed the same procedure that happened here.
Again, Mike, I would be interested to know if any of them had 50% of the votes on it.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, unfortunately, I don't have that percentage, I'd be happy to get that for you.
You said other legislatures would be opposed to having the towns vote?
No, no, the elected officials in Kingston that we're talking about, they were back and forth in discussion, they're saying, because I, and on a personal, I never want to stop a police station from being built, I served in the Public Safety Committee and all that stuff, but that's a separate issue. They had, it was more, I was back and forth with Representative Carter on this, I did speak to Senator Vinny DiMascio, but the Chief of Police in Kingston was concerned, the Chief of Police in Hanson, who lives in Halifax, was concerned that if this amendment ever went through, it was going to kill the whole deal, and not allow a police station to be built, at all. But, the bigger discussion was, in the past history of these particular situations, it's been the elected school committee that has taken the vote on this, not, unfortunately, the rest of town. That's why, moving forward, I did file a piece of new legislation to allow towns to have the authority to vote on this, because there was no clarification on this.
But elected officials only?
No, no, town, just like you have a town meeting, yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's what, okay. Yep, that's what we were looking for, because on the Silver Lake Regional High Committee, you know, we're a small town.
Sure.
Minimal vote compared to Kingston.
Right.
So even when we have to vote it at town meeting if they want to purchase, we figured, hey, if they want to sell it, it should be the same way.
Sure.
So, I guess it is what it is.
Unfortunately, with the, obviously Kingston is a larger town, but there was one abstention during the voting of this, too, that could have caused a tie vote, which would have killed everything, and the initial vote of the school committee on the regional end. But unfortunately, that didn't happen, because it was a question about a conflict on one of the members.
I believe it was in Kingston.
Matter of fact, I should backtrack that, there was one, there was one, I was told there was one member of Kingston who passed away, so that seat was never filled, and then there was a member in Plimpton as well. So it was actually two people, I guess, that weren't there for that vote.
Yeah, I think...
I guess I did.
Because, yeah, because what I've been told since the Kingston position has been filled, I believe, since then, and then I was told that the Plimpton person may take a vote moving forward on that, but I can't say which way they would have voted. I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry. I believe the Plimpton person was there and stayed.
That's correct, that's what I heard.
Any more questions?
There is. I was just clarifying for the record, that wasn't the...
No, I know that. No, both Plimpton representatives to the school committee were present the night of the vote.
Yeah.
It was one in the affirmative, I was the abstention.
Thank you, Jason. Okay, any other questions for Senator Brady? Anything else going on that will affect Plimpton?
Well, I did, depending, of course, the town of Kingston, I believe, still has to vote on this issue, I did hear that they voted it down by a small margin, who knows where they're going to be on this issue. I know some people in Kingston don't want it built near, this is what I'm hearing through the grapevine, do not want the police station built near the school, and some do, and unfortunately, the way the demographics are, you know, Plimpton's a smaller community, and so is Halifax compared to Kingston, it's almost, I hate to use the analogy, like the Electoral College when we elect presidents, we run into the same situation. But, moving forward, I did file this bill, I'd be happy to let you know when the hearing comes up, we have just docket numbers now, because we're getting into the new session. Anybody is happy to, if you can't make it because of your work schedule, send correspondence into the committee hearings, or if you can make it, anyone is happy to testify moving forward.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
It'd be great if you kept us posted on it.
Sure, thank you, and I appreciate you inviting me tonight, thank you.
Thank you for coming down.
Okay.
Did you ever hear back from John Council about the by-watching of the capital plan?
No, did you not?
No, it is, I wish you could hear.
Okay, so I'll make a note to contact. Alright, first thing on the agenda then was actually Rocky Harvest, is there anybody here that wanted to address that?
What is it?
Rocky Harvest?
No.
No? Alright, then we're going to skip over it, unless you have anything else you want to say about it?
No.
Okay. The Plimpton Housing Protection Plan Committee, we did get a grant from the Old Colony, the words just lost, Old Colony...
Planning Committee?
I don't know, doesn't matter, we got a grant.
Okay, good.
To help us plan our housing, low-income housing.
What kind of, how much money?
I don't know.
Yeah. I saw something from Christine, but I didn't...
Something that strikes me around $9,000, I did not say that. Old Colony Planning Council, isn't that what it is?
Yep.
It's the, to help us develop a housing protection plan, particularly affordable housing. We do have some appointments to do tonight.
Yes.
Do you have those?
Yes, you do.
So right now, we have a committee of three, which would be Christine Joy, Sharon Housley, and Don Hastings. We would probably like two more people to join, so if somebody has an expertise or an interest in this, please contact Christine Joy. So, a motion to appoint Christine Joy, Sharon Housley, and Don Hastings Eli to the Plimpton Housing Protection Plan Committee from today's date, until the committee is dissolved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Foesed? None. I actually did find one other person who's interested in this, and wants to talk to Christine before committee.
I thought you might have received these emails early on, these dating in October.
Yeah.
And it's all about the grants, and this is part of it. And Carver, you don't guarantee that Carver isn't going to jump on this one, now they sent it out to all the other towns down who haven't jumped on this either.
Okay.
So, I wouldn't count that being available.
Okay, so this, this was about joining some of the other regional towns to get aerial photography for our maps and plans?
Right, well, Bob Carling relies on pictometry in the aerials, on almost everything he looks at.
Sure.
And we have pictometry, an old software program that came in 2010, and it overlays our maps, but these would also be overlaid with Mass GIS, and with all the new changes in our maps in the last six years. But it is, planning could use it, Concom, I mean, that's, because it's available online, they could all be looking at this, and see the overlays, and it will show all the structures, it's a very, it's probably better than the level of Google.
It's much better.
It's much better.
So, how do we fund this?
Well, you know, I sent it to Bob, and I said, you know, your group downstairs really should, or through the Selectmen's budget, it's up to you guys how you want to. But, it is, they will attest, it's a very valuable tool, and it's been six years.
Yeah, so is it software?
And the last time that we got into one of these grants, too, no, it's a flyover that we could then, Mass GIS would upload, and all of our parcels would be overlaid on it. So when anybody went into Mass GIS online, any of the boards could do it from their meetings, and we, Bob and I do have pictometry, it's an older version, but he uses it on his desktop all the time.
And the cost was $9,400?
$9,790. Right now, if there are a couple other towns, it might go down a little bit, but right now, that was the estimate, based on our...
Does that include the overlay on the maps and so on?
It's all in here, you know, and I send an email, oh, you know, I didn't see CD what sent the email to the Selectmen. This, right now, we have to decide by March.
It was this afternoon.
$9,000, is what they're looking for, roughly $9,000?
Yeah, $9,500 or so. Steve Dunn is the point person for additional towns who want to jump on Hanson is the point town for this project.
So I'm a little confused, what, when they fly over, what do we get? Is it a one-time thing only?
Oh, it's one time, yeah, it's very expensive to do a flyover if we're standalone to do it.
Okay.
But this, and, you know, I do have the level of, it's like .25 something or other, it's a very, you know, high resolution.
So the one we're using now, how old is that?
That was done either 2009 or 2010.
Okay, so these last quite a long time.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so it would be, you know, until, and the last time it was through OCPC that the towns all banded together and had this done.
Okay.
So this would, it might be that long again, before we had the opportunity.
Generally, a lot more, if you do a single town, it's a long one. When it first began back in the 90s, when they were actually doing this, before GIS, it would cost several hundred thousand dollars to get it over, to have the overflights done, and then to have it coordinated with the maps. But it does generally lead to a significant increase in tax revenue.
In revenue.
Yeah, and, you know, Bob would literally see how close to the lines they are, I mean, all kinds of things, but, you know, I asked him, he uses it all the time. He calls me if his pictometry isn't working, and he, you know, he'll say, can you...
So, and you said, if Carver were to join this year, then perhaps the price would reduce, and...
I don't know, the price that I quoted, you know...
It's based on square?
It's square miles.
Miles, and we're 15.1, Halifax is 15.7.
15.7, so I did the math, unfortunately, I had a heavy finger, and so that's, that's the approximation, but I could get back to Steve Dunn in Ducksbury, or if you want to call him, whoever, if you're interested.
And when, do you need to know this?
March 10.
March 10, so we have...
I received it today, so...
We have next week, can you look into how we would fund this? Maybe if we can pull a little from each department or something?
Theoretically, we could fund it out of building and grounds, if the Finance Committee will be kind enough to replenish that account at the end of the year, where there's enough, you say $9,000, or there but...
$9,500, $9,479 right now.
What do you mean replenish? Are we going to overdraw it?
No, no, we won't overdraw it, but, I mean, there's several other things that have been, you know, going on, we had $14,000, $15,000 in it this year, and in fact, I can tell you what's left. I mean, we could more than cover that amount, let me put it that way.
But that'll throw other things off?
Yeah, it would seem to me that we should reduce the other departments.
Yeah, what we'd have to do is...
Then Finance would just have to approve an increase in all the other departments.
Unless they haven't used all their monies this year.
What's that, the...
If we find the money, will this happen, or is it still subject to other towns?
No, it's going to be flown in the first of April.
So it's going to be done anyways?
Oh, it's going to be done.
It's just whether or not we do.
Yeah, seems like a sensible thing to do.
You know, it did, and when I came in this morning, I said, well, I need to...
I'll put it on the agenda for next week, and...
It's a, yeah, it's very, it's very valuable, I'm just looking to see what...
And it's one thing Bob does, he's like, all the time.
So really, Bob should pay for it.
Well, I keep telling him that, and he keeps saying he doesn't have the money in his budget.
All going to come out of that big bucket sometime.
That's right, yeah, well, yeah, and that's, for that type of money, I guess, I think the last time I heard a quote for Plimpton was a couple years ago, I had spoken to somebody through Mass GIS, and it was like $20,000 if we removed ourselves.
Alright, so I will add that to next week's agenda, to be the sixth.
I have $16,000 left in that account.
You have $16,000?
And, but there's several thousand already spoken for, for some other things, but, again, it can be covered, and then, it's a great account for things like this, which is why I would really like to have it replenished next year, we made a significant deposit into it last year, it's a, it's an article, so it's just the money carries over from year to year.
Well, you have to go in now to talk to, or it's too late, do we lose that window to talk to FinCom?
They have another meeting at 6:30?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, probably not.
I'll forward you what I have, Dale, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Alright, so maybe you can research the funding, talk to FinCom, and, you know, I would say if building, planning, anybody has any money left in their budget, that...
Yeah, there may be some ways to make some transfers, you know, it's not, I mean, it's not a huge amount of money, but it is, it's very beneficial, several towns use it, I'm not sure around here, but, for instance, if you want to see what it looks like, the town of Douglas, I mean, you can zero down to one parcel, you can throw it up, and then it's, you know, cross-referenced as far as the property cards and all that other information.
Good.
But it's, it's very handy, and generally, the first time it's done, it pays for itself several times over.
How's it do that?
You discover things.
And then you tax them.
That people didn't necessarily officially build.
Just kind of aside here, update on the...
Fire EMS? Basically, more of the same, had a meeting with eight sides of the Finance Committee, and Brian Dudley and Jay Cohen, to review some of the cost, make sure we're covering everything. We're also taking a look at the ambulance study from 2013, that was quite detailed, and making sure that we have costs in there, so that we know that we've got all the segmentation covered. And tonight, the five chief meets with the Finance Committee, and we'll see what comes out of that, but we're, we're moving forward.
Okay, good. Alright, Townhouse Security, and I actually should have reached out to the police chief, and I didn't have time today.
I haven't seen him today, so I don't...
So we must be at least, we must be near the three weeks.
I would, I would think so, yeah. I mean, we're, I mean, we're covered with the buttons now and all of that, but I don't know when they, if they've scheduled it yet, or when, when they'll do it, but it will be very shortly.
Okay.
If we could also make another, be very careful with the front door.
Okay, so again, to anybody who has keys to this building, which should be just department heads and committee chairs, and you shouldn't be handing out your key willy-nilly, make sure you lock the door behind you when you're in here when the townhouse is closed.
Lock it when you leave.
And, yes, lock it when you leave. Thank you. Technology Grant.
Okay, I was going to make you a copy, I'll give you this after. And Dale, you made one, right?
Yeah.
So, I asked Michael to go through and see what we needed here at the townhouse.
Mm-hmm.
So he segregated this into the server for exchange, exchange software, then he looked at the replacement of obsolete computers, and he's recommending that seven of them be replaced. Upgrade of the backup device to handle additional data, and that 9600 should be moved off to the side. We need a additional printer, and it should be colored. So I figured if we're going to go for a grant, we'd put this in, this is a Toshiba, they gave us two quotes, the other one was more expensive, so I took the least, the less expensive one. But it's a heavy duty, you know, it's not the kind that goes on a desk, it's a big...
And how large a paper would it use?
It will not do the great big plans, but it'll do, I'm not sure if it'll do something like that, but close to that.
Okay.
And the last is, we talked about having a projector for the cable and a screen. I talked to AKAs, and what they're recommending now is, you, they have TVs that, in effect, become the screen, and they talk wirelessly between the cable system and the screen, the TV. They also operate as, in effect, a whiteboard, which I'm a little amazed at, but sounds like nice technology. The thing with a projector, if we use a screen, is because of all the windows in here, the light may have a problem in the screen, you know, it's not as HD-defined as this would be. So I took, the TVs range in, from 55-inch up to 96-inch. I put in for a 70-inch, figuring if we're going to put in for the grant, that we'll surround this with some verbiage, but we would wall-malt it probably over here, and then we would be able to show presentations, people would be able to bring in their laptops, whatever they show on the screen would also be picked up by cable, so it would play back.
Okay, that's $8,900.
$9,600. Oh, I'm sorry, $8,900. And they'll, they'll come in and do a demo, so this is for the grant, okay, we can decide then whether... We can decide then whether 70's too big, too small, who knows? And also, these are their quotes, so I'm sure there's room for doing some horse trading. So that comes up with a subtotal for the townhouse of 32,200. The town clerk software, these are things that we've been talking about over the last couple of weeks. Codification services for the bylaws, given the new committee we've got going. Public records tracking database, board and commission's database, contact database, and a business registration and contact. Those four add to 15,018,800. The public records, we definitely have to have, I mean, it's, and I think the codification is something we're definitely going to need if we're going to do this correctly. So I see all four of these being, you know, for 15,000, I think it's going to make a big difference in the amount of effort. If we don't do it this way, we'll be doing it manually. Pat Dillon also gave me a quote that Dana Fowler had put together for police mobile data terminals, which amounts to 60,000, and there's a six-page write-up on it that I have him back. I'm not sure whether, how we would put this together in one grant, okay? So we need to see what we're going to do there, but, so with these, it comes up to 108,000. Now, I think the next step is for us to sit and talk through what makes sense to put forward as a grant for the town.
Right.
We can't get into the grant system until March 1st, until Wednesday, that's when it opens up. And then it's open for the month of March and closes April 1st.
So I think maybe one thing to look at, maybe it says it in the grant write-up, is, is it all or nothing? Or will they, they'll say 108,000, well, we'll give it for these three things, but not the rest?
Right.
Because if it's all or nothing, then maybe we have to limit it.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
And then look to see who won last year and what their grants looked like.
Yeah, some of them were, some were small, and some were quite large.
Yeah.
I wonder whether, every town's facing this new public records tracking database. I'm not sure they're going to want to grant that as a sole reason, because if they do it for one, how can they refuse any town? So I think when we decide how to package this, we need to talk through, you know, what makes sense that will have the most...
Yeah.
Yeah.
So when you were doing the volunteer list...
Yes.
Did we have anybody in town who has grant writing experience and someone we can tap just to help with this?
Well, two names came up. One was a lady apparently that was used before, and I don't know her, lives down here on 58. So I guess we'll have to find out whether she would be receptive of looking over our shoulder.
Yeah, just a one-time help for the town.
Yeah. Linda Letty said she hasn't done grants, but she would like to sort of understand how to do it, so I'm not sure she's going to help on this one.
Right.
But somebody in the future we might think about.
Sure.
Generally, most of the components are in the grant application, it's not, and then, and then there's supporting narrative that goes with that, and that's just generally the way you work it, I mean, the one that I saw from, that they had last year. So it shouldn't be terrible.
I think the narrative is going to be the critical component.
Yeah, I think that there must be some catchphrases that, that you can use that may be more successful than others. Okay?
The only other thing is that they may look upon this as, hey, these are just natural, ongoing business things.
Oh, they are, but for a small town like us, these are major things.
Okay.
Do you want this on again next week, or do you want to hold off for a couple of weeks?
I'd like to get Christine's, yeah, let's put it on for next week. I'd like to get her feedback, because she's done grants.
Dale, the email that Tara sent out with the invoices, she's coming here to install on Wednesday?
What's that?
Did you get the email that was sent from Tara?
The public records database?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So I have an invoice for that, a proposal?
Yeah, because I did tell her to go ahead with that part of it right now.
Okay.
She needs the, the, you know, the, she's underwater with all this public record stuff, so that one she needed now, and in reviewing the money, we have enough money in the IT account to cover that for the rest of the year, so I told her to go ahead with that one, so I mean, we may be able to get that one off of here, but...
Well, we may keep it on too.
Yeah, yeah, but anyway, just, just because, again, it was just one of those things, I wasn't sure, to wait another five months, she's buried in stuff out there now.
I think people understand the volume that's coming in. You know, you mention it to people, and they say, oh, well, that's kind of a one-off. It is not a one-off.
No, not at all.
And it's not five minutes to do it either.
It sure isn't.
Not at all. I mean, you know, other communities, the bigger communities are actually hiring people just for this particular job. I mean, we're not quite that big, but again, we're going to be faced with, we're either going to have additional personnel or hours in the town clerk's office, or we're going to have software to make it a little bit easier for them to deal with it. And I think the software is obviously the way to go.
We had one last week that ate up, or two weeks ago, that ate up all your time and ate up Tara's time, which, which means you're not doing your regular job.
It's not taken up either.
So...
I know another town close by, they are bombarded, they're getting two and three a day since this has started. And they're saying the same thing, where it's just coming from a sudden, and it's taking their time also, in one, two, because you did sign the warrant.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, public safety building update. Basically, we do have, we had a rough drawing of a plan. We have a meeting tomorrow. The plan should be firmed up, and again, the plan will still be flexible enough so that when it's, you know, put up for bid, you know, some things may change. And then we're going to start talking about presenting it to the board's lectern and getting the word out to the public on, you know, the need, that the police chief will open up the police station for tours and...
Yeah, we should have pictures of the cell and the concrete block.
So, so that's where we are in public safety building, and that's just the police station. Town administrator position update, I don't know why I left that on, but you folks met and started talking and...
Yeah, and we've got a draft proposal from the Collins Group that they would be willing to come in and take a look. The fellow who's heads that up is out of the country until the end of March, so we'll set up a meeting right around the 1st of April to have him come in and talk to us and see whether that makes sense.
Okay, good. On the snow day policy, so basically, it came back that the library is going to be closed when the townhouse is closed.
That should be the way it works.
Okay, and...
And, and transfer station as well.
Okay, so I know that you had followed up with...
Yeah, and I just just said, you know, and they didn't really get at it, but, you know, when, when, when you close it down, probably should just close everything down. Again, I talked to Jimmy about it, and stuff's not plowed, not shoveled, you know, and he has people, you know, he actually has to put people on, so, and he doesn't, because of the nature of the snow removal, he doesn't have the time to, you know, go down and pay attention to the, you know, to the transfer station in the process of the storm, the roads obviously take precedence.
Right.
So just the safest thing to do is just include all the town operations.
Yep, okay, so for those of you who went to the transfer station on the snowy, stormy day, we're sorry that you loaded your car up for nought, but from now on, basically, if the townhouse is closed, the library and the transfer station will also be closed. We want them out plowing the roads and not plowing the dump, so...
Do you want that updated when we post onto the website?
Yes.
Yes.
Make mention, everything is closed and specifically transfer and library, because sometimes people don't make the connection between that and the townhouse.
Mm-hmm. The sign...
Include the two, right?
Yes. There, no, there really isn't any other building, so... Okay, the sign warrant list, I think, is in the correspondence, so we can just deal with that later. Appointments, we already did, you gave those back to Bree, you have to sign. So town coordinator reports?
I do not have, I haven't spoken to Michael, I do not have a, an update on the email server at this point. Custodian started today, actually, and we already, we already had one, basically, emergency, we called him and he came right in and fixed that it was a water problem in the, in the restrooms, and I messed with it a little bit, but he was, fortunately, he was right there, and he has all of the contacts that Darrell had for, you know, vendors and tradesmen if, if, if we need to get ahold of anybody, and he's reachable on his cellphone, whether he's...
So Darrell is still available to, was there any overlap or...
Yeah, last week.
Okay.
Last week, they were, he worked with Darrell last week, and he has Darrell's information, so if he has a problem, he can call him, even if Darrell's sitting on the beach with one of those little drinks with the umbrella in it.
Did we sign anything for you, the townhouse custodian?
You voted to, you voted to hire him, and then the rest of it takes place with Personnel Treasurer's Office and Personnel.
I have his application. I decided to apply, I have his application.
You, you left for a few minutes, it's possible that we made that vote then, I'm not sure, timing.
The other thing too, we have, if you remember, there was some question, I don't know why they wanted to do it, but rather than a bond on the Lake Street solar project, they wanted to do an escrow agreement, which sent everybody back to the drawing board. I don't know why the, Avidia, well, actually, Avidia's doing it, the company's name is BWC Bluefish River LLC, that's the company that's actually going to be running it, and Avidia Bank is going to be holding the escrow. Anyway, this went back and forth between the attorneys, and it's, it's fine now, everybody's agreed, everything is in it. Avidia is signing four copies, they're going to forward it to us, we'll sign them and send two back to them, and we'll have two for us, and I guess they're ready to go down there. What else, what else?
Selling town car, was there anything there?
No, I did not put the ad in for the town car yet, I haven't, I haven't, I haven't done that, I will definitely get to that this week. The light control meeting is scheduled for the 7th at 10 a.m. I confirmed that today with them, he's going to be forwarding the information of who's going to be there and so on and so forth, so when I get that email, I will send that.
Okay, so I will rearrange my work schedules so that I can be there, and you will also be there?
Oh, absolutely.
And I don't know about Christine, because it's during the day.
Yeah. Have we notified Brady, Senator Brady?
No.
No, at this particular point, you know, it's sort of the negotiating thing, everybody, they just want to talk to us, and the state will be in there too as well.
Calter's going to be there, right?
If they've invited, and the state's invited, and we haven't yet.
Yes, we have.
Oh, we have, okay.
So we ought to invite Senator Brady?
Yeah.
Just, you know, he can make a decision whether he wants to join.
Yeah, they, yeah, they wanted to keep the initial stuff rather, just relatively low-key until everybody was, you know, everybody agreed to the...
Do we know how many people they're bringing?
No, I don't, offhand. Bob Woods, their representative, he's coming up from Atlanta, and...
Have you got any letters or emails or anything?
Yeah, yeah, I've got emails. I've got emails, but he's, I spoke with Bob this morning, he's going to send me an email listing everybody who's coming from that end, so, and we'll just...
I still think if we've invited Tom Calter, we're going to have to invite Mike Brady.
Okay, I will take care of that. I did a lot, I did let Senator Calter's office know that this was...
Yeah, good.
You know, something that's in the works, and we don't want to clear the deal by being too vocal about it.
Yeah, that, they're very sensitive to that at this point, and I can kind of understand why, I mean, you know, they, you know, they would rather have some sort of agreement in principle with the town and the state put together, and then they'll come in.
But actually, these...
Who was the state person that's already involved?
Maria...
From what office?
And that's the, that's the next big question, I don't, I don't know, it's under her emails, but it's an economic, economic development department of some...
Betty, the Benedictus contacted either the business office or the economic development office, and I'm not sure that they had heard about it, and she arranged with the assistant director to come. So I don't know who this Maria person is.
Maybe a different department, there's a lot of departments, I'm peeking out.
Right.
This is a, I can, I don't have it, I don't have it with me, it's on my computer, what her, her title is, she's the director, and, God, I can't remember. But it's, it's an economic development...
Maybe you can get me that information, and I will get that on to Betty and see if we're being redundant with the other person coming.
So that's Tuesday of next week, okay?
Yes.
Is he Tuesdays lately?
Which is really not good for me, but, that's fine. All right, anything else, Dale?
Now, I'm being scolded by the finance committee for not having the selectman's budget, but...
And rightly so.
Well, I've been asking for four weeks, what are you going to do about your town administrator? How much money does that add to your budget?
They've got that.
And, well, I mean, that's fine, but you didn't tell me they had that, so if I don't know, then I can't, I've just been waiting. Your budget doesn't change that much.
Share what you've got with us, so we can take a look at it, because I have no idea what we're putting in.
Basically, same thing as last year, 2% salary, selectman's expense, 2% added to selectman's assistant salary, which is...
Can you just take a picture and send those around to us?
Yeah, I can do that, I can do that.
So we're getting a dollar...
Computer maintenance is level funded.
We're going to get a dollar or two this year?
Yep, you are, actually, unless you want more. Memorial Day is there. Townhouse, I did put in an extra $1,000 because of the snow shoveling thing on the, on the other, but that increases that budget by $1,000, I mean, $1,000 for the whole thing, which is now 18 to 10. Town council, you had said we're going to hang on to the number we've been working with, so that's level funded.
How much is that?
47,000.
With any luck.
What, is it going to be 80,000 this year? Or more?
I, I'm, so far, it's not that way, but I mean, by the time all the bills come in, I'm sure it'll be over the 47.
Oh, yeah, it's over the 47 now, isn't it?
I have, I have the printout as of a few days ago, and I mean, if you look at just this, it looks really good. 23,222 was the balance as of the 8th of this month.
So we must have some big bills coming in.
They tend to backload their billing with us, so, yeah, I mean, I would assume that
Okay.
when they come up at the end of the year. Town reports, 1,200, that hasn't changed. Utilities, 54,500, that's level funded again. Selectman's salaries, three bucks.
And six cents.
Okay, that's the same. Blanket insurance, a level funded it, I don't know, it generally doesn't jump around a lot every year, year to year, but I, they don't, they send us an estimate, but we don't get that until May, so I mean, for the time...
Who's it with? The blanket insurance?
It covers a bonding...
No, no, I say, who's with them? What companies?
Borac Insurance, that's 1,300, they handle, yeah, they handle the bonds. Everything else, well, property and casualties with Maya, 52,850, and workman's comp is with Mega, 28,000, and the police and fire is 43,000, and that's with Cook and Company.
Do we know what percentage we got last year increase? Because I, yeah, I just got a feeling they're going to hit us.
In FY15, we were 123,000, and...
And what do we budget for '16?
We went to 129 in FY16, and 125, 150 in FY17, and that's what we'll be again for FY18. Because again, I mean, we've only been up 2,000 in the last three or four years, and so I, I don't think it's going to be a huge amount of money. If we have to adjust it, it's not a major kick, it'll be maybe several thousand when we find that out in May. And that's it.
Where's technology in there?
That's the computer line, IT line, it's...
Why don't you get in there for that?
20,519, which is what it has been for three or four years. We had, we, we did a three-year payback on building the website, that was the deal with them, and that money got left in, and it was like, it was 3,500 divided by three, so whatever it was, in a, in a three-year period, 1,100 or something like that, 1,100. Anyway, I just left that in, which means I didn't have to increase the budget, and we're actually in... And we're actually in very good shape right now. Let me show you. $2,500, we're looking. Right now, we've got SOP 8 again out of that. We still have $11,026 to go. And that would be five more months of Comcast, five more months of local computer service, another quarter for, another two quarters, actually, for App River, which amounts to another $4760 for the rest of the year, which leaves us with a fair amount of money, which is why there was the extra money to take the $1,200 out of the public records database. I don't really think we have to increase that, I mean, we can, but I don't think at this point, we really have to.
What about the software purchases, and then we'll have maintenance? We won't have it for the first year, so you'll need to increase it for next year.
Generally, you don't get it for the first year, it's included in the initial price, and Tara has put some of that in her budget, and we can put some of it in ours. But her, the packages are relatively inexpensive, they're $300 to $500 a year for maintenance, and that's, you know, that would be maybe another $500.
I think we should put some of this in there, just, you know, at least that off. I don't want to have to start off here and then go there if this, none of this is accepted.
So, put these in there?
Oh, for sure, yeah. The software for town clerk?
Put the software in the budget?
Put these softwares in the budget? Okay, I've got one in there already.
With the hope that we'll get them covered by the grant, but?
Probably should be as a standalone article, and then we may know of the grant, we may know of the grant by the time we go to town meeting and just pass the article.
I'm fine with it being an article book, because it's a one-time shot. Then we also should have an article in there for the exchange, because we've got to do that here regardless. So, I guess, yeah, let's put them in as articles.
Okay, I'll make the article for that, I think that's probably the easiest.
And then leave technology to where you got it.
We don't need to bump, again, I know the first year is covered, but we want to bump up in case we need any extra?
Do it next year. I mean, we could probably do it next year, because again, I had enough money left over any, not left over, but I mean, that was projected not to be spent. Now, that doesn't mean something big won't break, but?
Right.
But, you know, to be able to put the public records database on this year's budget. So, we're going to buy that and go with that, and then, and then that's about a $450, $500 a year maintenance, which is pretty inexpensive. I think there's, the other one is three, I may run up another $1,000. I still think there's enough money in there to cover it, as long as we don't add a lot of workstations or something. And again, if something breaks, there's no real anticipation for that. I mean, if the server goes down or something like that, which is fairly expensive, I mean, you can't sort of budget that in and hope for it. You just knock on the Finance Committee's door, unforeseen and extraordinary, and we need money to do a new server.
All right.
But our server's fairly new, so, our server's four or five years old, so it's not a problem. And that's, I mean, that's where we're at, there's really minimal, minimal increase in, you know, in the IT budget, in the overall selectmen's budget, there's really nothing big. Again, I don't know, insurance, that may be $2,000 or $3,000 more this year, it may be. I mean, our experience has been pretty good, we haven't made a lot of claims this year or anything that should drive it up, so I don't anticipate it going.
And you've done pretty well in getting us some little grants from the insurance companies.
The grant has already closed, so I can, it for next year, for July, she's going to send it to me in June.
Good, good.
So, I have to go and hurry.
Good.
Anything else?
We got a little money back, too, we have a lot of credit.
We got executive minutes that like to get approved, too, sometimes. I don't know if you've seen them, I mean, they've been sent out, but I don't know if you've had a chance to read them. While you're doing that, I'll do correspondence.
Yes, good idea.
And that's it for me.
Thank you, Dale.
Okay, Board of Selectmen, vendor warrants paid.
I just, I'd say usual utilities, and if there's anything really different.
Lynch, Malloy, Mariani, $10,000, that's for public service? Which ones is that?
What is that? Dunham and Sweeney is public safety.
This is to approve sharing that when the auditors come.
So, that's the auditors' expense?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the audit.
Okay, so $10,000 to the auditors, and $18,750 to Donahan and Sweeney for the ongoing Public Safety Committee?
Yes.
Okay. And $1,500 for the database service server, who's that to?
It's calling inside, did I just, I had that list already typed out?
You remember?
LLC.
LLC?
Yeah, I have to go get it. Don't forget those.
Okay, Council on Aging, their newsletter for March. Unfortunately, this is the last newsletter for the Director, Chris Moreno, which is, wish we could keep her going, but I'm sure we'll be able to have something for her before she goes. So, the newsletter is out, apparently. This is a letter to the Plimpton Board of Selectmen from Patrick Dillon, Chief of Police. It's my privilege to write this letter of commendation for Officer Daniel Hoffman. On February 17th at 2:43, Officer Hoffman responded to a medical call for an adult male who had overdosed on heroin, was not responsive, and a family friend was doing cotipulmary resuscitation, I can't say that word.
Resuscitation?
Resuscitation.
No, resuscitation?
Resuscitation, that's it. Having been trained in the use of an opate antidote, Officer Hoffman quickly assessed the situation and immediately administered Narcan to reverse the effects of this overdose. This action revised, revived the patient and helped restore normal breathing and heart rhythm. Because of his quick and professional efforts, the patient is alive and well. For this reason, I plan to award Officer Hoffman a lifesaver day, day off without pay, with pay for his actions. Please join me in thanking Officer Hoffman for his quick action in this instance, and to recognize his professionalism and unmatched service excellence. I could not be more proud.
Thank you, Officer Hoffman.
Okay, LL Data Designs was for the database server for $1,590. And we also have one other warrant, Eversource was $1,608.01 electricity utilities. Is something we read?
This is something we have to sign. Oh, okay, I know what this is, that's the one that we have to sign.
Yeah, this is a letter from KP Law asking that we sign, they're being audited as a normal, their financial statements as a normal part of their year-end.
Letter to KP Law, yeah. So, motion to sign this letter as written?
Second.
Favor? Aye.
I don't know what we're doing with this. This one don't read, I guess. This is a, this is a letter from Citizens Housing and Planning Association to the Chairwoman of the Selectmen. This letter is sent to the town of Plimpton on behalf of the current owner of an affordable property under Chapter 40B to inform you of the owner's intent to sell her affordable unit. The unit is located at 15 Cranberry Knoll, in the spot of Cranberry Knoll, a Chapter 40B project for which Citizens Housing and Planning Association serves as the monitoring agent. Based on the Affordable Housing Deed Rider, CHAPA, the acronym, has determined that the maximum resale price for the above referenced unit is $191,800. For deed rider, the price was set at the amount the seller originally paid. As explained in the deed rider, CHAPA and the homeowner have 90 days to locate an eligible person for this unit. This 90-day marketing period will begin on February 17th, 2017, and end on May 16th, 2017. During this time, the town of Plimpton can elect to purchase the unit for the maximum resale price. If the, if an eligible purchaser fails to buy the unit during the 90-day period, plus the option for a 60-day extension, the current owner of the property can sell the unit to an ineligible purchaser, subject to the deed rider restrictions. CHAPA is assisting the owner's real estate agent with resale and advertising of the unit. When a new purchaser buys an affordable unit, a new deed restriction is signed and recorded, and the unit remains on the town of Plimpton's subsidized housing inventory.
Okay, so I can't see that we would want to purchase it, so?
No, but somebody in town might be considering. Halifax Express, Halifax, Plimpton, Plimpton, Halifax, let's see. February 10th, nice article on the front page on the progress of the, on the police station at the Public Safety Building Committee meeting. Selectmen will hear a dog complaint on Ring Road, which was done on cable last week. Nice article on Silver Lake's Got Talent, sponsored by the Class of 2019. Anybody who saw the Les Mis production they put on, it was unbelievable, great job. And I don't see any pictures of this. Plimpton Halifax Express, February 17th. Nice picture of Lillian Rankin on the front page on the Plimpton Green with the Snowman. Selectmen say dog is a nuisance, an article on the Ring Road dog issue.
And just an aside on that, I did hear from a neighbor, and she said that the dog is being walked on a leash, and have not been any issues.
Good, good. Inside, there's a nice article on the Hampton Police Department, seen as an example for the new Plimpton police station. This was well done. Notice of public hearing, planning board notice for consideration of site plan review and septic, no, special permit. Protection criteria of Section 8.3, application to the Plimpton Planning Board. And lastly, Plimpton Express, February 24th, headline Rocky Mountain Water Settled, article on that. Plimpton, 17 town meeting and election calendar. Silver Lake Land Sale Hearing is March 9th, anybody's interested in going?
Which is a Thursday.
Yeah. Very nice article by Alan Wheelock on Plimpton's own Emerald Necklace to be enjoyed for all seasons. This is Churchill Park in Cato's Ridge. Really well done, nice pictures. And that's it.
Good, thank you. Oh, we have the 4H thing, who, every, every year, they send us a bill for $500, and we have not paid it for at least the past four years. And I don't know, I mean, it's a great program.
We're in this, once we do one, we have to do them all.
Yeah, so?
That becomes the issue. Then we have to start saying, who deserves it and who doesn't?
Yep.
Just doesn't feel right. Certainly, people should be supporting this, but I don't believe town money unless it's voted by?
Well, it's a county-run thing anyway, so somehow or another.
So, we'll table that.
So, we have executive session minutes for February 6th and for February 10th. Motion to accept these minutes as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There you go, accept those written. All right. Dates to remember, our next meeting is here, next Monday, the 6th. There is a Public Safety Building Committee meeting this Wednesday on?
It's March 1st on Wednesday?
Wednesday, and it's at 7:00, which we usually meet at 6, but that night it's at 7:00. Bree, we didn't get any minutes for the dog hearing, correct?
That's what I sent you?
Right, I'm sorry, I thought you were going to amend them, or?
No, I just didn't know that. That was the outline that I filled. That was the outline that was filed for the round.
We'll do that next time, then, because I didn't print them out or anything, so?
Okay, sorry about that.
No, no, that's fine. That's absolutely fine. And I have, do we have minutes from you for the 16th, Dale?
Sorry?
Do we have minutes from you for the 16th?
No, I don't have them.
Okay.
I have them for you this week.
So, we will do those next week as well. Any other business? No, no, it's fine, we'll do it next week, no big deal.
We wanted to follow that, but it's not that same outline that we?
Yes, yeah, that's fine. All right, having no other business, a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, good night, thank you all for watching.
Good night.